Okay, I'm gonna call our meeting order. If everybody's standing, we're gonna have the Pledge of Allegiance and afterwards, I'm gonna ask Alderman Betts to lead us in a word of prayer.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and live in the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, we are truly grateful for the day that you've given to us. Pray, Lord, that we have used this day wisely and honored you. We pray for forgiveness if we have not. Lord, as we take up the business of the city, I pray, Lord, that you help us to make wise decisions. Thank you for bringing us to this time of year where we think about the greatest gift that was given to us. I pray, Lord, that you help us to remember the reason for the season. And, Lord, tonight is possibility of bad weather and things happening around us. I pray, Lord, that your safety and your protection would be given to our residents. Bless those who will be in harm's way. And again, Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to serve you in this manner. Ask you to bless our meeting before we pray this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Okay. We're gonna start with, I ask our city clerk, Ms. Pyeira Wilson, she'll do roll call.
Town of Vidalia Board of Alderman Roll Call for the regular meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman dated December 13th, 2022. Alderman Betts?
Present.
Alderwoman Demby?
Present.
Alderman Gardner?
Here.
Alderman Probst?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Nay.
May I let the record show that a form of the board is present and accounted for?
Okay, thank you very much. In front of you have your minutes. Any questions on the minutes? Any additions or deletions? Have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion made.
Motion made by Alderman Probst, here, second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Demby, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we, two are, uh...
Was that both sets?
All in favor say aye?
Both sets.
Oh, we got two sets.
Oh, we had two sets. I'm sorry.
Both sets.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and do the other set then. Which one did we just do? The, uh...
The regular.
Okay, did the regular and did we have a special meeting? Okay, so, there are motions, we accept the other.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, here, second?
Second.
Second by, I think Alderman Betts for first, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, next thing we have is public comments on the current agenda items. Anybody have any comments on the current agenda items? Although on the portion of redistricting plans, we will have public hearing on those if, and if you want to speak to something else on the agenda. Anybody want to say anything else on the agenda? Okay, so we're gonna go to our CPA and Municipal Accountant, Ms. Deborah Mokes, gonna give her report.
Tonight's financial statements include the balance sheet as of October 31st, 2022, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the four months ending October 31st, 2022, a summary budget to actual comparison by fund, and a detailed budget to actual comparison by department. These financial statements have been distributed to all departments and Aldermen for their review. In summary, the town has combined cash in the bank of $27.5 million, included restricted funds of $24 million in the hydro fund and $1.7 million in the sales tax fund. There are $4.6 million in investments, which includes $2.4 in the hydro reserve fund, $1.5 million in the general fund, and $705,000 of the ARPA funds. That's, I think, in these financials, it includes $1.4 million of the ARPA funds because in October, we did receive the second half of the $705,000. Total assets are $56.3 million, total liabilities are $12.7 million, the fund balances is at $43.5 million. The statement of revenue, expenses, and changes in fund balances for the four months ending October 31st, 2022 indicates combined revenues of $14.1 million, total expenditures of $14.4 million, for a change in net position of a negative $281,000. Overall, total revenues were at 28% of budget, expenses were at 29% of budget, transfers in and out were at 48% of budget, and the change in net position was a negative 17% of budget. Hydro rebates approved by the council members in September in the amount of $2.8 million are included in these financials, which is the reason for the negative change in net position. Due to low levels in the Mississippi River, hydro power production has decreased for the months of September and October, which will decrease the amount of hydro royalties to be received in February. The lease payments on new town vehicles are not included in these financial statements. Capital outlay is 10% of the budget. The town has received the second payment from the American Rescue Plan in October. This brings the total amount collected to $1.4 million. The auditors have completed their field work and are working on the audit. The deadline to complete their audit is December 31st, 2022. Complaints in our report.
So, we should be getting pretty quick a draft on the preliminary audit, is that correct? Because that's supposed to be submitted by the end of the year. We, we're certainly, they had plenty of time to submit it on a timely basis, and thank you for the work and on that, they, they've made quick work of it. So hopefully, I think we're gonna have a good, another good report like we had last year. Thank you, Deborah. Any questions from council to, uh, smoke? Okay, let's move on to number two. Board discussion vote on approval of these following occupational licenses. First one we have is called CC's Corner, Ms. Cali Tucker. Is Ms. Cali here? Hey, Cali. Uh, you wanna tell us a little bit about your boutique? I think it's gonna be a boutique, clothing and gifts?
Uh, yes, um, so, I personally want to say thank you for your time and consideration. Um, I'm Kaylee Tucker. I'm a mother of two beautiful handsome little boys. Um, I recently just quit my eight-to-five job. It just became, I was spread too thin. I was, it was just miserable trying to get, you know, my boys from point A to B and C, you know, and myself, you know, an eight-to-five job. I just, you know, and the time I missed having to make up that at work. I mean, at home, it just, I didn't have any time for my kids or myself or anything. So me and my fiance came to the decision together that this was best at this time for our family. And so far, you know, everything's been successful and, you know, I've had a lot of people support me during the process, and I'm so thankful for that and so blessed. But, um, right now, I have a booth set up at the Rusty Bucket, and I hope to be able to bless this mess here soon. I'm just, they're so packed, and I'm waiting for a spot and opening. But, um, I'm working on my website, getting that open, running this evening, and, you know, you have to start somewhere. Hopefully, I have an app one day, and I want a physical location. You just have to wait for that perfect opportunity and, you know, location. So, right now, here, this is where I'm at, and I'm excited to see where this new chapter brings me.
Okay, well, thank you very much for coming. Does anybody have a question for Cali? If not, do I hear a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Probst, here, second?
I'll...
Second by Alderman Smith, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, Cali, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, next we have the honeysuckle vine, Mr. Shelton Seals. Is Shelton here today?
Right.
Hey, Shelton, hey, you wanna tell us a little bit about what, what you...
It's just gonna be arts and crafts.
Okay.
Really, it's gonna be, uh, just on the weekends, Fridays and Saturdays. The wife is putting stuff together and just gonna be setting out, don't need signs or anything like that, just in front of the shop.
Okay.
Um, like I said, you know, probably twice, twice a week, just Fridays and Saturdays, just mainly getting something for her to do.
Okay.
And, you know, just putting out some arts and crafts.
Okay, so, I mean, it's like yard art too? Me, y'all do the yard art?
Yeah, yard art also, and, um, and stuff that goes inside the house, you know, welcome signs for in front of the house and, you know, stuff like that, flowers goes around the signs.
Well, good deal.
Yeah.
All right, well, anybody have a question for Shelton? Called the honeysuckle vine, be on 107 Jackson Court. Do I hear a motion, we accept?
Carter Street.
Oh, it's gonna be, I'm sorry, 1814 Carter Street.
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion, uh, motion made by Alderman Smith, here, second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Betts, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Shelton, appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one we have is Vidaya Market. This is a change in name, uh, ownership, not change in name. They're gonna keep their name the same. They came in today and, uh, Jay introduced me to him, and, uh, they weren't gonna be able to stay for this, but this is only a change in ownership. Uh, is there any questions?
Will still be Vidalia Market or Harpers, uh, Harpers Food?
They can call it Vidaya Market.
It's gonna be, they're gonna keep the name Vidaya Market.
Oh, yeah.
But it, the new owner, instead of, uh, they called it, uh, the, always called their business, it was the, uh, I don't know, I think it was something operations, supermarket operations or something like that, so...
Supermarket operations.
Yeah. So this is just gonna be Harps Foods Stores Incorporated, uh, there in Springdale, Arkansas. They're gonna maintain the names, independent names of the stores, so. Can I hear a motion to accept the ownership change?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderwoman Demby, do I hear a second?
Yes.
Second by Alderman Probst, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next thing we have is, we have back in town is Cajun Specialty Meats and Seafood LLC, Mr. Bethany and Michael Strickland. Uh, I think it, looks like they're reopening like they were before, and I don't think, they're not here tonight, are they? Okay. Do I hear a motion, we accept this occupation license?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, do I hear a second?
Say.
Second by Alderman Smith, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. We didn't have any outdoor sign applications, so we're gonna go over to the public hearing on an ordinance to adopt the redistricting plan 2022-A for the Vidaya Town Council after the 2020 census and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Can I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts to enter public hearing, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Demby, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are in a public hearing. If anybody has any questions on the redistricting plan A that's up here and been discussed in the past few months, any questions from the public?
Is A in the middle?
A, looks like it's in the middle. Is there, no questions, I'll entertain a motion to exit the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderwoman Demby, do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Second by Alderman Smith, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we're gonna have board discussion vote on an ordinance to adopt the redistricting plan 2022-A for the Vidaya Town Council after the 2020 census and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Demby. Now, we will have discussion amongst the council. Is there any discussion amongst council? Okay, so, are y'all ready to vote? Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Uh, I'm gonna ask our, our clerk again, Ms. Pyeira Wilson, to do a roll call vote.
Motion offered made by Alderman Betts, second by Alderwoman Demby to adopt the redistricting plan 2022-A for the Vidalia Town Council after the 2020 census. Alderman Betts?
Yes.
Alderwoman Demby?
Yes.
Alderman Gardner?
No.
Alderman Probst?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
May I let them, uh, just reference the place that they're located?
Okay, thank y'all very much. Uh, that is now, uh, is completed. We will now skip the, several of the next redistricting plans because they're not relevant right now because not adoption of, uh, number A was elected and selected to be the redistricting plan. And just to reiterate, this now establishes five districts within our town. Before, we had three districts with being five, I mean, three at-large members in what was called District Three. Now, you can have single-member districts in districts, uh, that will be established three, four, and five. I think we've got a very good equal representation of our town, and I'd like to thank everyone that worked on that. Jay worked with the, uh, with the, uh, with the people who came in, who would get an independent look at our new census and did a really good job, I think, of, of establishing good lines for our town to move forward with. So, thank you for your support on that, and so we'll move on with that. Then we'll go down to, oh, item 10, board discussion vote on the 2023 beer and liquor permits. Is there any question? Do I hear a motion, we approve the listed?
I'll make that motion.
Liquor and beer permits. Motion made by Alderman Gardner, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second was made by Alderwoman Demby, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next thing we have was board discussion for Louisiana Legislative Auditor's Compliance Questionnaire. Uh, this is a questionnaire that's done each year. Uh, we answer that, and Sally Simmons does that, and I think, do we need to accept this? Oh, Deborah, is that something we need to, um...
We need to adopt the compliance.
Okay.
For the mayor.
Okay, all right, so...
You're gonna need to have all of them signed.
Pardon?
All of them need to sign.
Okay, so, but it, does it, is there, have to be an adoption of it by them signing, isn't that consent?
You need a motion to approve the adoption of the compliance.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so, uh, do I hear a motion to accept the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire, and then we'll require your signature?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, here, second? Second by Alderman Probst, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, I get, oh, oh, if, if, Pye, if you would get with them after the meeting to get their signatures on each one, you and Deborah, we'll make sure we get that submitted timely.
I'll take a look whether it's a resolution or a motion.
Okay, all right. Next thing I have is, uh, board discussion and vote of approval of appointing Port Commission members by, by myself. We had, we had Ms. Catherine Cartwright, who wanted to retire off the Port Commission, and we had, uh, Mr. Freddie Marks, who is getting on, up in age, and said he really, really, it's a struggle for him to get to the meeting, so I'm gonna ask the council to approve two, two new members. One is a returning member that was, uh, with us before, and one is a new member, real proud of her accepting this. Uh, first one we have is, I want to ask for approval is Ms. Tanya Richardson. She's the plant manager of our hydroelectric plant. Her and her husband, Brandon, live here in Vidaya and have, uh, two children and live within the city limits. She's one of the ones I'd love to appoint. The second one is Ms. Helen Wyatt. Ms. Helen Wyatt is the wife of Ms., Mr. D. Whit Wyatt, who retired from IP. I think a lot of y'all might know, uh, uh...
Dr. Helen Wyatt.
And, uh, but Ms. Wyatt, she is a professor at, at Alcorn. She's a very, very, uh, good person, has a good family, and very well respected in the community, and I would like for us to, uh, approve, get your approval tonight by putting these Port Commission, uh, members forward for approval. Is there any discussion on that?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts for approval?
Aye.
Here, second? Second was by Alderman Probst, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, I'd like to thank them for the service, and we'll be getting a letter to Ms. Cartwright and to Mr. Marks on their, on their work that they've done on, on that committee. Uh, I have a request to add something to the agenda. The police chief has requested to us to add an agenda item. I think this would be a good point to interject this. Right now, there's a lot of escorting being done by, by trucks, uh, big trucks coming across a bridge, and Joey says since the town does not charge a fee for those escorts to come in when they come across a bridge, it's tying up all of his help, and they're finding out that it doesn't, they, quicker for them to come here and not pay anything, be cheaper, and the chief is wanting to put on the agenda for y'all to discuss and let him present to y'all the possibility of instituting a fee for, uh, trucking escorts to bring things through town that's gonna require all the police help and escort. So, uh, can I, if somebody wants to add that to agenda, it takes a unanimous vote by council, and if y'all want to do that, I'll take a motion to add that to the agenda, and we'll address that now.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, here, second?
I'll say.
Second by Alderman Smith, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, Joey.
Uh, we, we're getting four to five escorts, um, a week. Uh, used to, we'd get one a month, but, um, words done got out, diesel's high, it's cheaper to come through here, and it's, it's an inconvenience on our citizens, you know, it's tying up traffic constantly, uh, it's tying up the PD, because any time there's an escort, it, every, everybody working just about has to go help whoever it is get across the bridge. So it's tying up all of our assets, and it's an inconvenience on citizens as well. Uh, what I'm asking is to some kind of fee to put out, because if it's gonna tie us up and inconvenience is just to, for convenience for them, uh, it's either gonna cut down on the escorts or we can make a little, uh, money doing it, because it's tying us up. It's just gonna constantly get more coming if, if we don't do something, I feel like.
Any questions?
Do you have any, you have any idea what other, um, fees are?
I've been in contact with M.DOT. They're supposed to be calling and maybe trying to get us some, some ideas of what, you know, other people are charging. Uh, like I said, it used to not be a problem, but I feel like it needs to be addressed now, and, uh, you know, we can, we can call other cities that have this same problem. It's not many people just gonna have a, you know, a bridge. I mean, this is the only route to go, basically, unless they drive all the way around, so, um...
Do we know if there's, well, I guess, kinda like what he was asking, is there, do you know of a scale or who he could ask? Like, you can't charge more than this, but...
I was gonna say, suggest that council do research on it and find out what other towns or communities are doing?
Yeah, they should be researched and, and called around and, uh, you know, stay in contact with M.DOT, you know, get some suggestions from them, so...
Okay.
Who would handle that, Joe? Who do you think, as far as handling it? Would y'all be the handler of the funds, or how would that go? What was, what was your thoughts on that?
The, the way M.DOT was talking, they would add it, because that, M.DOT's already making a fee for the escort.
So they would add it to their fee?
The way they was talking, they would add it into that, their fee, and I'm assuming it paid the town.
Well, that's what I was wondering, how, yeah, so they would handle it, then it would come to us?
The way I understood, now, I could be wrong, and that's gonna be something we're gonna have to talk more in depth.
We, we're gonna have to set up some kind of, of system of keeping up with it.
I'm just basically wanting to present it to y'all and see if y'all even wanna fool with it or keep going like we're going, but, you know, it's definitely an inconvenience to the town and us.
We, I, we'll get together, we, you and I get together, and we'll reach out to some others that's on similar, you know, places that have to do the same thing, that's got a bridge, that they gotta get that escort, and, and we'll get together and come up with something and present it to council, because it is gonna require an ordinance change to put, add a fee to the, uh, to our, uh, by our laws, our...
Do we have to follow the process that way or...
This way.
Or is that anything that they go through?
Uh, because it's, it's all, it's all to do with the, uh, the weight limit, and the old bridge versus the new bridge is the difference, you know, the, the new bridge can handle it, the old bridge can't. So, when we have one coming this way, they have to come down the wrong way. So we gotta shut, we gotta shut everything down, let them get across, then open everything back up.
Is there traffic going east, big trucks like that? Uh... I think, I...
They're, they're...
What you're saying is if they're coming across, we still are inconvenienced, and is that gonna be M.DOT, Mississippi gonna give us that money, or who? That's what we need to research both ways, because y'all tied up either direction.
We only, we only tied up coming this way.
Bridge is wide enough going that way, so they can just... So you don't ever have to do anything, then? Okay.
So going that way, we're good, it's just coming this way, we, they gotta come over there and then...
They'll block, they'll actually block the, the new bridge to break, get them, to get them to cross.
Right, I've seen it a lot of times. Vidaya, and they're gonna do it over there.
It's getting...
My suggestion is to do the research going both ways, just in case we have to ever tackle it going the opposite way, and, you know, sometimes situations comes up that you never had to handle before, and you'll just be knowing what to do if it happens.
And it was blocked today because I had an emergency, and I had to wait, and wait, and wait until those big vehicles came across on the wrong bridge.
Yeah.
It was on the new bridge, and so, I mean, it was...
Yeah, see, the words...
You couldn't go, you couldn't, I couldn't turn around and go another way, it was just, I mean, I was just caught.
Words done got out, that, you know, it's, nobody's getting charged, so it's, it's only gonna get more, and I feel like it's...
Do they have a certain hours, like rush hour or...
I've, I've been shutting them down during rush hour and during eight o'clock, but, uh, I've had to call troops before because the trooper wouldn't do what I wanted to do, and they just said, "We're just gonna go on through." We had words about, I would act to call troops and got that shut down, but, uh, it, I try not to have through rush hour.
Okay, all right. Well, Joey, thank you for, you know, we'll, we'll certainly address that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you a bunch. Okay, item number 13 is board discussion vote on approval of, on entering, in intergovernmental agreement between the town of Vidaya and town of Vidaya to donate 10 computers to the town of Vidaya. Is there any question?
Nope.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, here, second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Demby, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next thing we have was board discussion vote on approval to use hydro funds to pay off our current debt. Uh, let me premise this by saying this would be one portion of the hydro meetings that we did have and did bring, this was one of the things that I think all the citizens were certainly in favor of, uh, and I'll explain on, when we get to item number 15, one of the reasons why, why I think we need to do this. Uh, right now, as Deborah said, we have a lot of money sitting in those hydro funds. We wanna make the best use of, of the municipality's money. We have a total debt right now that's totaling right at, it's probably about $11 million. This complex has a balance of, uh, I think it's five point, it's five point something million dollars, and, uh, then our, it's 5.6 million, five million for our electrical substation that's under construction, and the balance on our ladder truck is $560,000. That's gonna save our town, if we pay this off, it's gonna save us right at, uh, $400, $400,000, just under $400,000 a year, just in interest. Okay? And that's gonna, that's general fund money that we will be to use to help fund this increase we're gonna see in our garbage and collection charges, and we won't have to increase our fees to our citizens. We should do this anyway, but we're trying to also find out a way to make sure we don't have to increase any fees for our citizens on what we're gonna do. So having said that, we also just recently invested $5 million into Louisiana Asset Management Pool, and that's gonna earn us an additional $66,000 a year in interest over what we're earning now. So, uh, we're trying to be good stewards of the funds as we get them, and I think this would be a very, very smart thing to do under the hydro royalty, uh, meeting, uh, project money. So, and that's, and we'll probably address the rest of the project money first of the year, the first meeting of January, to discuss the other, uh, requests of the, but this is something we felt like we needed to do now. So I will open it up for any questions or anything from council at this time. Yeah, if there's no questions, I'll be glad, if, anytime if y'all wanna come sit down with me, uh, me and Deborah, I'll sit down with you, and we go through the numbers so and Deborah, I'll sit down with you, and we go through the numbers, so you can, if you need any kind of verification for any of these, these decisions, so. So, can I hear a motion that we use these funds to pay off debt?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Probst, second by Alderman Betts, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank y'all very much. The town of Vidaya is gonna be out of debt, and that is a great thing without any kind of increase to our citizens, and that's, that's good news. I mean, we, we sat there for a long time with all these millions of dollars, and you can only get 1% earnings on your savings when you're paying on debt. Three, the rates on these debts were anywhere from 3.5% to 3.8%, so it only made good sense to do this. So thank you, council, for doing that. I think that's very important. So that brings us up to the next thing that I think's gonna help us, what this money's gonna go toward. We're gonna have board discussion vote on approval of waste disposal contract. Our waste disposal contract is coming up to renew next year in November. Our current rate is just over north of $17 a ton. The lowest thing that we have gotten for renewal is $31 a ton, so nearly double. So we're looking at increased cost of 60 to, you know, depending on your tonnage, we, one year, the last year that we had a full calendar year, we took 4,300 tons to, to this company we're using now. And we had another bid from another company, they came in, and just to give you some totals for five years, now, this is gonna be a 10-year locked-in at 30, if we go ahead and agree tonight to do the 10-year plan, we can lock in the $31 for 10 years. It has a chance of increasing 3% a year, and it's tied to a consumer price index that I'll tell you about in a minute. But if you look at the savings over five years, the, it's gonna be, let me get my file, because I wanna make sure I'm accurate with this. And we, there's a lot of things to consider. The other person who put in a bid, they're a little closer, it's probably ran a little better, it's probably better roads going into it for our trucks. However, the difference in price is almost $10 a ton, and when you're talking about 4,300 tons, that, that's could be substantial. So, the difference, what we're looking at, if we compared apples to apples, and the difference in diesel going to the, to the one that we're using now, it's a little bit further, this, it's costing us about $5,700 more a year total in diesel to go to where we're going now than we would to our other person who put in a bid. After five years, with renewing with Green Meadow, our total landfill fees would be With the other bid that we've got, our total five-year, total would be $919,000. So I think that difference right there is, is enough for us to make that decision, but I wanted to put the, put it out to the council for them to discuss the pros, the pluses and minuses of going to the other as opposed to Green Meadow where we go now. The other place is closer, the other place has better roads, but I think, Lee, y'all said the other, the Green Meadow that we use now is improving.
Correct.
So, I would like, if any questions the council have, to, to ask that now as we decide which one to go with.
Okay, the other company, five years, the other company.
It's five years, yeah.
So, I mean, we're going for 10 years.
And it's not gonna go down.
It ain't going down.
It's not going down. You're right.
So, you know that? That's all, I'm gonna make a point, that that's a 10-year, not a five-year, and it's cheaper.
Right. Five, in just five years, I didn't even do the 10-year, because we don't know what that would, but you're locked into that, other than the 3% increase. And that, that, what they call that is the, they call this tied to the consumer price increase based on water, sewer, and trash published by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the U.S. Department of Labor Statistics. So, thus, there is something you can look at, see what they can increase that 3% to.
But you also stated that there was, they were good about what they did, didn't do, right?
Well, I just, it's just in discussion, what would y'all, what would y'all's pleasure? Want y'all wanna make a motion to which one to take?
Make a motion that we go with the present, with?
Okay, Green Meadow?
The 10-year.
Okay.
And.
You save money.
Okay, motion made by Alderman Probst to go with the 10-year plan with Green Meadow, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman, I think I heard Alderman Gardner first. Second by Alderman Gardner, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, all right, thank y'all. Lee, nowhere to go?
Please.
Okay, all right, all right, we're winding on down. Thank y'all. Now we have the 16 is board discussion vote on Vidaya Police Department, Ms. Mahogany England to be a dispatcher full-time. Any questions? Do I hear a motion to accept Ms. Mahogany England?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, here a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Demby, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, now, y'all are welcome to stay, but we're gonna go into, I'm gonna take a motion to go into the executive session. I don't know how long we'll be in, there might not be any action taken when we come